Yeah, you were coming through perfectly fine previously, Councilmember Rowell. Did you happen to change any settings on your device that you're using?
No.
Okay, thank you. You're right.
Come to council.
Sighed. Sighed. Because that's what you were about to do and I would walk away.
Vicky's not here, she might come for the close session later. Hopefully.
Well, yeah, but can you hear me?
Because that's what you were about to do when I would walk away. So Vicki's.
Vicki's not here, she might come for the close session later. Hopefully. Councilmember Rowell, did you happen to change any settings? Oh, you can hear now? Okay.
Well, yeah, but can you hear me?
Little bit.
Okay.
Are we all good?
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Rodriguez, ready to begin? Okay. And Liz, you ready? You two ready? Ready to go? Good evening. I call this August 8th meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. On August 11th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. Two of our council plan to attend tonight's meeting virtually, and we have taken steps so that they can participate in tonight's discussions. As you can see, I'm wearing a mask because I was exposed last week. I tested negative three times, but this is CDC guidance. When you're inside, your people should wear masks for a while. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Sergeant-at-Arms tonight. It's Senior Officer Carl Rodriguez. He has served as a police officer for 25 years, with the last 16 years being with the town of Morrisville. He is assigned to the K-9 unit and with his partner, K-9 Arco. He is also a veteran of the US Army and served seven years as a paratrooper with the 82nd Airborne Division. Thank you for being with us here tonight, sir. Tonight's invocation will be delivered by myself. I have our strategic plan on the wall next to my desk in my office, and it is helpful to me to be reminded of our shared vision, mission, values, and high-level plans. Our adopted mission is to connect our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services. I like the brevity and clarity of that statement and appreciate how it prominently includes one of our town's adopted values, which are dedication, integrity, courtesy, and innovation, or D-I-C-I, is how I remember it. Our town's adopted vision is a sustainable and thriving community that celebrates diversity and inclusion while enhancing the well-being of people who live, work, and play in Morrisville. I personally like to add "learn" between "live" and "work," but we adopted this statement before we had so much success collaborating to create the many new learning institutions and opportunities we now enjoy in Morrisville. What I really appreciate about all our adopted statements and values is how they embody action. Each council member, each staff member, and each resident of Morrisville has different and unique life experiences and perspectives. Only by listening to each other and seeking to understand will we hope to reach our own personal potential and the shared collective potential of our town. We have come so far together, and it is my hope that we continue to encourage two-way communications to determine what is necessary to enhance our shared quality of life and the courage to allocate the resources necessary to activate those innovative programs and services. Thank you. If you are able, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Would any council member like to be recognized? Okay, I entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 5-0. There is one item on this evening's consent agenda, a resolution authorizing encroachment and indemnity agreement with Wake County for Crabtree Creek Nature Park. Is there a motion in a second to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Robati, second by Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously as well, 5-0. There are two administrative reports tonight, a Morrisville Smart Shuttle follow-up and a Morrisville Grants Program annual update. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has questions. Are there any questions on either of those items? Okay. I'm just making sure that no one participating virtually has any questions? Nope? Okay, great. Moving on, we have four proclamations tonight. First is recognizing Smoresville, next is India Independence Day, the National Fentanyl Prevention and Awareness Day, and Senior Citizens Day. I will read the first proclamation. This proclamation is changing the town's name to, from Morrisville to Smoresville for Thursday, August 10th, 2023. Whereas community spirit is essential to the high quality of life enjoyed in Morrisville, and whereas residents enjoy consuming smores, which are a delicious treat made with graham crackers, chocolate, and marshmallows, and whereas National Smores Day is celebrated every year on August 10th, and whereas the residents of Morrisville are encouraged to celebrate National Smores Day by enjoying fun activities and eating smores at Smoresville Community Park, now therefore the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim the name of Morrisville to be changed to Smoresville for Thursday, August 10th, 2023. And I'm sorry that you can't see me, but I was pretty much smiling through that whole proclamation, because that's a lot of fun. The next proclamation will be read by Councilmember Garamella, please.
No, I've got the.
Oh, actually, I apologize. Mayor Pretend Johnson.
So this proclamation is in recognition of India Independence Day on August 15th, 2023. Whereas the multicultural people of Morrisville have a great tradition of celebrating significant milestones and events of historical importance, therefore we are proud to celebrate India heritage during the 76th year of India's independence. And whereas the theme of this 76th Independence Day in India is nation-first, always-first, which will be held as part of the events under Azadika Amrit Mahatsav. And whereas in 1947, India proclaimed independence and became recognized as the Republic of India, making the beginning of its identity as a free and sovereign nation of people. And whereas as a growing democracy, India has proven to be a courageous nation seeking to establish as its basic fundamental principles those same values upon which the United States was founded, freedom, opportunity, and justice. And whereas the local community of people in Morrisville who hail from India or with ancestral ties to India continually demonstrate the greatness and beauty of their homeland, and their contributions are notable and reflect success in many areas including education, medicine, science, technology, and retail industry. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize August 15th, 2023, as India Independence Day and encourages citizens of all backgrounds to recognize the contributions made by the country and people of India and extend best wishes on commemorating that historic milestone of independence.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend. I will read the next proclamation. This proclamation recognizes August 21st as National Fentanyl Prevention and Awareness Day. Whereas fentanyl is a highly addicted synthetic opioid that is 100 times more potent than morphine, and whereas according to the DEA, illicit fentanyl is manufactured with other illicit drugs to increase potency, sold as a powder or mixed with other illicit drugs and pressed into counterfeit pills to look like legitimate pharmaceutical drugs. And whereas the fentanyl crisis in the United States is a serious public safety threat, and whereas the illicit fentanyl poisoning rate in 2022 was the highest in the history of the United States, and fentanyl poisoning was number-one cause of death among citizens in the United States aged 18 to 45. And whereas synthetic opioids, primarily fentanyl and the analogues of fentanyl, are devastating communities and families at an unprecedented rate, claiming two-thirds of the more than 170, 107,000, 100,000 lives lost to drug overdoses in 2021. And whereas individuals increasingly use pills or other drugs without knowing those substances contain fentanyl, whereas families in the United States affected by the use of illicit fentanyl seek to raise awareness of that issue and prevent fentanyl-related deaths and join together in the effort to save lives on Fentanyl Prevention and Awareness Day. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville recognizes August 21st as National Fentanyl Prevention and Awareness Day and encourages people to promote prevention of the use of fentanyl, promote drug prevention, and the creation of drug-free communities, and to educate young people to commit to healthy, drug-free lifestyles. Adopted this 8th day of August, 2023. At this time, I'd like to ask Chris Budnik and Justin Garrity from Healing Transitions to come up and accept this proclamation. We meet at the circle. Thank you both for being here today. Really appreciate it. Enjoyed our chat earlier. Take a quick picture. And we'd love to hear your thoughts of your efforts and your ongoing work.
Thank you to members of the Town Council here to recognize a serious public safety, public health risk and threat that's been impacting our community for a very long time at this point. And as Executive Director of Healing Transitions, we see this work on the front line and very proud that we have taken a leadership role in responding to overdoses and to help prevent them. And I'd like Justin Garrity to speak briefly about that.
Hi, my name is Justin Garrity. I'm the Director of Recovery Services at Healing Transitions Mids Campus. I oversee a post-overdose response team that started in 2018. And like Chris has said, it's been going on too long to overdose epidemic. And it only seems to be getting worse with the fentanyl that's out on the streets right now. The fentanyl pretty much right now is pressed pills. I'm going to give you all the education you need to what we're seeing on the street. A lot of pressed pills, a lot of Percocet 30s end up being fentanyl pills. What I think is great about this proclamation is it's asking us to be aware of this stuff but also make the kids aware. We're seeing younger and younger folks get drugs and overdose unaware of what they're getting. So I really appreciate Morrisville asking us to be up here. Thank y'all for your good work.
Notice that this is of particular importance to us because both Justin and I are individuals in long-term recovery from addiction. We know the benefits that recovery brings, not only to our families and our loved ones, but to the community as a whole. And so this is of particular special importance to us.
And I understand you mostly work with EMS, but we really appreciate how our fire department and our police department are on the front lines and working with you. That's Peter Costa, our chief, right there. Nate Lazinski, our fire chief. So we appreciate your ongoing collaboration to help all of us.
We couldn't do it without the first responders and the community departments.
Right. Thank you both. Take care. Justin, have a great day. Councilmember Robati will read our final proclamation of the evening.
That's a tough act to follow. You're providing an amazing service. Proclamation in recognition of Senior Citizens Day. Whereas the observance of Senior Citizens Day in the month of August is dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for millions of senior citizens in communities around the world. And whereas Senior Citizens Day was originally recognized on August 14th, 1935, the day President Franklin Roosevelt signed the Social Security Act. In 1988, then-President Ronald Reagan officially changed the observant day to August 21st to recognize those seniors who made positive contributions in their communities, as well as to bring awareness of social, health, and economic issues affecting that population. And whereas individuals are generally classified senior once they reach the age of 65. According to the United States Census Bureau, the nation's 65 and older population is projected to reach nearly 95 million people in 2060. And whereas the observation of Senior Citizens Day recognizes the achievements and vital contributions of senior citizens and their involvement in their local communities. Whenever and wherever a need exists, they are making their presence felt, always rising to the challenge. Seniors are more educated than ever, living longer than ever, and are experiencing the lowest poverty rate ever. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize August 21st, 2023, as Senior Citizens Day. We recognize the impact of the senior residents in our own community and encourage you to spend time with the seniors you know, listen to their stories, and grow from their wisdom.
Thank you very much. This time we're at item 10, Public Address. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received and recognize anyone in the audience who signed up.
There were no comments received, and there were no individuals sign up to give in-person public comment.
Okay. Are there any residents here in the audience who would like to speak for up to three minutes on any subject of their choosing? Okay. Moving on, we are now at item 11, Future Meetings, Events, and Community Engagement Opportunities. The Western Wake Farmers Market offers healthy and fresh food and goods from small and local businesses from 8:00 AM to noon every Saturday at the Healthy Food Hub located at 280 Town Hall Drive. You can visit http forward slash forward slash WWFM.ag to see a complete list of local vendors and shop local. Exciting news, the town website will soon get a brand-new URL. The website will be moving from www.townofmorrisville.org to www.morrisvillenc.gov. By adopting a new gov.gov URL, the town is creating a safer and more authoritative online presence. The new Town of Morrisville domain will go live on August 14th at 12:30. The previous URL will automatically redirect to the new URL, but visitors are asked to update their bookmarks. As you heard via proclamation earlier, Morrisville residents are invited to take part in National Smores Day in Smoresville. We will be handing out delicious smores at Morrisville Community Park, 1520 Morrisville Parkway, this Thursday, August 10th, from 6 till 7 PM. There will also be a DJ and crafts-for-kids event. Parking will be on-site. Earlier on Thursday afternoon from 4 till 6 PM, please join staff from the town's planning department and the town's consultants, Houzzle Levine, to learn about the proposed transit-oriented development and zoning plan at an open house at Town Council Chambers. The open house will not include a formal presentation. Instead, the consultants and town staff will be available to review the proposed plan, including maps and conceptual images with interested parties on a drop-in format. The Morrisville Senior Center will host a Senior Resources Fair on August 18th from 10:00 AM to noon to help the community learn about the many resources available for seniors in Morrisville and the surrounding area. Multiple organizations and vendors will be at the fair covering topics such as senior living options, Medicare, physical and speech therapy, home care options, and more. For more information, please visit www.townofmorrisville.org/MSC. Please mark your calendars for upcoming events in September. The White Goods Collection will be on Thursday, September 7th. Pre-registration is required. And our pop-up dog park is coming back. It will be available on three consecutive Sundays in September, September 10th, 17th, and 24th, from 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM on each of those Sundays. Please print out and complete the Dog Park Registration and Liability Waiver in order to participate. Even if you completed one in the past, you need a new one for this summer's outings. For a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.townofmorrisville.org or sign up online for our Next Week in Morrisville weekly email sent out every Friday. This time we're at Council Manager Comments. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao first, followed by Mayor Pretend Johnson. Councilmember Rao, are you available?
Yeah, yeah, I am. Can you hear me? All right. Okay. Well, first of all, I want to wish everybody in the community a happy 76th in the Independence Day, and I really like the theme nation-first, always-first. I think it's something we can celebrate here at home as well. I want to remind everyone that the North Carolina Digital Summit is on August 15th at the North Raleigh Hilton. Secretary Jim Weaver encourages more local governments and technology folks that are interested in everything going on to please attend this event. It's an all-day affair, and it's going to be great. They're going to talk about broadband, cybersecurity, talent development, and workforce training. And finally, just continuing to be very excited about the possibilities of T20 World Cup Cricket in Morrisville. And I just want to commend the staff and council and all of the volunteers and folks along the way that have put us in such a wonderful position and looking forward to the continuation of minor league cricket and hopefully the World Cup in June of 2024. That's all I have for this evening. Looking forward to a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Pretend Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
I have no comments tonight.
Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Skorgins Johnson, please. Councilmember Skorgins Johnson, followed by myself, please.
I don't have any comments except for my favorite event of the year is Smoresville, and it's on August 10th. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I want to say a quick thank you to Mayor Pretend Liz Johnson for presiding over our July meeting while I was enjoying family vacations. Thank you for that. I too am looking forward to Smoresville on Thursday. I will also be at Handel's Ice Cream up near Breckenridge Thursday afternoon, working the counter. So come say hello and get a free Smoresville ice cream with any purchase from 3:30 PM till 5:00 PM. And now I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Fender. And now I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Fender.
No comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Fender?
I have brief comments. I'd just like to piggyback on the Healing Transitions individuals that were here to note that there is a women's campus as well. And I've met a lot of the women that go through their program, through some service work that I'm involved in outside of my town council role. And they help women not only with drug addiction but also in recovering from alcohol as well. And it's a really strong program. And those women that go through there have to work hard and just want to let people know that that resource is out there.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Now it's time for Staff Comments. Assistant Town Manager Rodriguez, is there anything that you'd like to share?
We have no comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. We are flying through this agenda. At this time, we are ready for our work session. We have one work session tonight. It's continuation of the Affordable Housing Plan Implementation Discussion. Danielle Kittredge, Principal Planner, will facilitate. And at this time, we're all going to transition down to the work session table to keep that going. So I don't think we need a break yet. So we'll just head on down there with everything that we need. Okay.
Take the microphones, right? Yes.
Yes, please bring microphones and bring your little, your blue things as well.
I don't have my, where's my sign? You know, nobody wants to hear anything I have to say anymore. Ah, there we go. All right. Okay.
As you're transitioning down to the main table, I just want to say that I would like to hear what Anna has to say.
Thank you, Vicki. I appreciate your support. Hello, my name is Vicki. Wait one more second.
Thank you.
I'm supposed to have papers? Yep. I think it's under your.
It's recovered.
Gosh. All right. I'm taking a, that's rough. I know you're really scared. I think you got an extra, extra seat there. Thank you. Waiting for the dog. Oh.
We're going to continue in just a moment. Thanks for your patience. Okay, the floor is yours. Please facilitate.
All right, thank you. So we're back again to talk about affordable housing. It's continuation from the last town council meeting. There were four items we were scheduled to discuss. And the first one regarding the incentive zoning policy, I'll touch base on a few changes that we've incorporated, as well as the slightly tweaked document that's attachment one, but also I did print out at your seats. In terms of the next item for the down payment assistance program, we heard from you some different feedback on that. We'll be taking that feedback and incorporating it into the document, but also understanding that there was concern about making sure we were leveraging town dollars. So also looking at ways if there are partnerships with Wake County before we come back with anything more on that particular item. For the land donation piece, just as a recap from that one, there was interest to look at three different properties with the 101 through 105 Church Street, the 201 Page Street, and the lot across from Historic Christian Church, as well as exploring some additional land donation partnership opportunities with Wake County. So that we, something we will continue to look into, but did want to recap, that is what we got out of the last work session. And then the last item that we didn't get to was going over the follow-up from the July 12th meeting with Wake County on affordable housing. So just seeing what other types of questions and getting some more information from you with regard to that. So the first thing I want to do is I'm going to go ahead and just go over the updates that were included in the incentive zoning policy document. And this one, we did feel that it is a more of a standalone document from some of the conversations perhaps with Wake County or other types of partnership opportunities. So if we do, if you all do find that this is in good enough shape that we want to bring it back at a subsequent meeting for policy adoption, that would be the next step if everything looks like it's okay. I'm going to repurpose the slides and just add it in the updates here. So with this, there was interest to making sure with the document, and I did highlight a few, a few items with regard to, we did change instead of available incentives, there was examples of incentives is putting that out there so that it didn't feel like this was very prescriptive and that people had the option to look at different examples. And the town has opened all reasonable proposals. We did add, I guess this is on the second page here, there was interest in perhaps reducing parking minimums in order to kind of keep it streamlined on here with these example incentives. I did want to note that, you know, staff would emphasize during discussions with any potential developers or developments that there's a desire, that there would be providing alternative modes of transportation in order for this to really balance out on its own. Just cutting parking is not going to work, but it gets in the idea that, you know, if there's reasonable proposals, there are things that we'd be interested in seeing. So I did want to note that one. And then I'm going to hop back to the first page since I skipped around a little bit. With the types of eligible projects, there's the rental opportunities and the homeownership opportunities in that orange box. With the homeownership opportunities, we heard interest to, rather than building and maybe selling the units that just donated the land to a nonprofit organization, to actually build those would be a more preferred option if someone was going to take advantage of a homeownership opportunity and donating those lots. So we did move that up and indicated that that was a preferred option. And then the last thing I did want to point out is we heard that these incentives would be more so geared towards helping to close a smaller gap at the end. And so one of the things that we would facilitate as staff in going through discussions with developers is, you know, asking if they've worked with Wake County and any types of financing, understanding a little bit more about their project and that these incentives on their own is not what's going to carry the entire project through and that they would help minimize the gap at the end. So I did want to point that out as well is another, based on the feedback that we received. And so I would ask if there's any specific questions on this document, changes, concerns that you all have with it.
I just have one question on the, when we have reduced parking minimums as an example, I get that it's only an example. I'm concerned that staff will emphasize during the review that this incentive will most likely be desirable, et cetera. I'm concerned that, that seems to me to be the kind of thing that will, could get lost in translation as staff turns over and, you know, and new people come in. And if it's not codified somewhere, you know, I'm concerned that we'll stop emphasizing that. So can you, is there anything that we can do to address that concern?
We can, we do have different administrative manuals that we create for different things. In terms of putting these items and the desirability of having the reduced budget in there, and that is the interest and the intent, is having the administrative manual to go along with this to make sure that those aren't lost in translation over time.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. Really, really good work.
Councilmember Garamello?
Thanks, Danielle. Very good presentation. And my question is more piggybacking on example incentives, right? Is this going to be an administrative staff doing it or does it come to the council?
So all of these would, I mean, it starts out at staff level, but because they are changes to the UDO or some types of, would go through maybe a conditional rezoning, these would all come to town council for approval. So staff would not sign off on it saying you have, we're going to reduce parking, for example, by 25% and you're going to put a bus stop or something. So they would all come to town council.
That's good. And then the second question is more about, in that guidelines, suppose a developer comes and says, I want to utilize all these incentives and I'll give you four or five, you know, rental units or one or two of this one. How do we quantify? Like, you know, that's a good value that you're getting. Is there any guidelines that you guys have?
So I knew on the front is, we've included with the eligible projects is, well, it says what is affordable housing? There is a section near the top. And having those types of things, and I do feel that if it doesn't, and it may be one of those things as you go through with some of these different projects, that depending on the scale of the project, kind of being proportional to that, also understanding, you know, are we giving up a lot to get these different units? And it's going to kind of be a balance with those. There's sort of that desirability of what we would like to see with these, but it's going to depend on a case-by-case basis. And we can also work, if there is interest in setting something up with, you know, on-call consultant or something, we've used HRNA for a lot of services that have expertise in affordable housing. And so there may be opportunities if that is a concern as well, too.
It's not a concern. It's just ensuring that we are getting a fair deal and the people of affordable housing, they're getting a fair, that's all it is, you know? Other than that, I think there's no rocket science. It has to come somewhere. We have to negotiate. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender?
Yes, so can you say more, can you speak more to number four on this slide? Curious. Can you speak more to number four? I'm curious as to what the intent is there.
So I think the intent with that is making sure that the developer has looked at a variety of different options of financing the project, using different resources to be able to build, because when you do affordable housing, you're going to end up with a little bit of a gap there to be able to achieve what, which may be able to in terms of, you know, the end outcome and what the developer may make off the project. And so there are different resources out there and making sure that they are exploring all those avenues. And just changing or asking for different incentives from the town only is not going to be the only way that they can achieve that gap and making sure. And so that was a concern that we heard that the town would say be more on the tail end of closing that gap to make, make the affordability work for that project. I don't know if that makes sense. Does it?
So on, so for example, on a couple of different projects that we've had for apartments, the developer has agreed to do 10% of the apartments as affordable housing. So, or is this saying that that would not be encouraged?
I think if someone is coming and saying, we'd like to ask for some tweaks to the UDO, we'd like to take advantage of, you know, a little bit of a density bonus or a height bonus or something, that for that, for that particular trade-off, we also need to be making sure that they're looking at other types of financing. If they're not asking for any types of trade-offs, then we don't need to really be concerned with that. They may already have that built in. It was more of a, sort of making sure when a product is coming or a project is coming to town council that we said, we've explored all these different avenues, we've looked at this, we know what they're, what's going into this project.
Okay, so it's more if they are looking for exemptions from UDO? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I just had, I'm curious, it's, it seems to me, and I might be wrong, that there's two different paths that this might take, in that the buy-right path and then the conditional rezonings are things that come to us. So I trust that whatever we put in place, the staff will be able to bring forward and do admin approvals within the UDO, even with tweaks. The ones that come to us for conditional rezonings, they're going to have to do so much work. And if they reduce their parking minimums and they do tree preservation, and then it comes to us, and those are things that change the site plan. So those are big changes. So what if it comes to us and we're like, nope, that's not enough? I'm afraid that that's, it might be counterintuitive that we're trying to streamline this, but it might end up that we get too far down the road without us giving a little direction earlier in the process. So can you kind of address that a little bit?
And one thing that I have seen in projects before, too, is sometimes there's more of the, I'm going to call it the concept, the concept plan with maybe all the items listed out. And if there is something that we want to, and I'll talk about it internally as well, too, maybe there is one extra step ahead of time that's, we're all good with this to take it along further. Because I do understand if there are a lot of things that are being asked for or a lot of variety of, you know, incentives that someone is asking for, you don't want it designed to the last, to the last point and then not, everyone not being on the same page with it. So there may be a point at which, you know, with this being a newer process, that for the applicant as well as, you know, for staff and town council, that gives an opportunity to make sure everyone's on the same page as it moves forward. And having that touch point with a concept, more of a, called a conceptual plan with the incentives or what they're asking for outlined.
Okay. I appreciate considering that as a possibility.
That's good. And it may be something that is not required, but it could be something that is offered to the developer if that is something they're interested in, maybe an option to, just thinking about different ideas that helps keep everyone on the same page.
Because once they start the process, they're not supposed to directly contact us individually. So this would give them a formal way to sort of do a check-in within the process.
And we can look into, you know, how that would work, if it would work, and if we want it to be something that's optional with that. And it may also see if there are other municipalities nearby, if they do something similar with regard to how, how their process works for that.
Okay. Did anyone else have something? Councilmember Rao has a comment, then we'll circle around. Councilmember Rao?
Yeah, I just, you know, my, my question is for Danielle, just in terms of, you know, as we put together these affordable housing programs, Wake County Commissioner Stallings made a point that once their town in Apex, she was on the council in Apex, had a, a plan, you know, that they knew and how they were going to fund it, for them it was a cent on the tax rate. The developers had more reasons to come and offer more projects. And so when I went back and viewed the Apex plan, there's just a tiered kind of approach of, some of it was low income tax credits, some was just, you know, we're going to develop a certain amount of units. You know, is it a combination of all of these things that will get us to that point where developers would want to come to Morrisville? Because I think, like, my goal, I think our goal, I don't want to speak for all of us, is to reduce that 1,100 gap of, you know, people out there right now in Morrisville that are taking 30% of their income on housing. And I don't see that number coming down significantly unless we have a reason that, you know, people are going to come in higher numbers to do that. So it's just, do we, is it a piecemeal approach or does it, you know, do we have to have a full-blown program to make that happen?
Yeah, I think this is one, one piece of the puzzle that tries to get at more so the private development side. There's also, as we've talked about in kind of the recap with the Wake County conversation, is the town, you know, going after some, and forming those partnerships or working specifically with a developer and understanding what their communities have done as well. And then that is another way to bring in different types of projects as well and how they're financed. But also, you know, in that conversation with Wake County, there seemed to be some, when you have that policy and that interest and saying, we do want affordable housing here, developers do come in with creative ideas sometimes. There's also people that work with affordable housing that are very familiar.
some of it was low income tax credits. Some was just, you know, we're gonna develop a certain amount of units. Is it a combination of all of these things that will get us to that point where developers would wanna to come to Morrisville? Because I think, like, my goal, I think our goal, I don't wanna speak for all of us, is to reduce that 1,100 gap of, you know, people out there right now in Morrisville that are taking 30% of their income on housing. And I don't see that number coming down significantly unless we have a reason that, you know, people are gonna come in higher numbers to do that. So it's just, is it a piecemeal approach? Or does it, you know, do we have to have a full-blown program to make that happen?
Yeah, I think this is one piece of the puzzle that tries to get at more so the private development side. There's also, as we've talked about in kind of the recap with the Wake County conversation, is the town, you know, going after some and forming those partnerships or working specifically with a developer and understanding what their communities have done as well. And then that is another way to bring in different types of projects as well and how they're financed. But also, you know, in that conversation with Wake County, there seemed to be some, when you have that policy and that interest and saying, we do want affordable housing here, developers do come in with creative ideas sometimes. There's also people that work with affordable housing that are very familiar with tax credit projects and how all of that works. And so we may see some of that coming in as well, too. And then that's how, you know, they put together their finance package. So I think it's a, it's a variety approach with it. This is one step to get there, to start getting there as we continue to build some other options.
Okay.
Anything else? Councilmember Rao?
No, that's enough for now.
Okay, thank you. I think we all had a chance. I'll recognize Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Robdy.
No, just piggybagging on what TJ said. I think I like where he was going. I think this is so new to us. Kerry usually have a pre-submitter or like, you know, pre kind of a thing where the council talk and say, are they okay? And then they go back to the staff and then the whole thing comes up. So it is pretty important here because if they are collaborating with Wake County and, you know, the town and, you know, all kinds of things, it's better, let's have everything on the table first so that their transition is smoother later on and not ask them later, hey, this is not enough, this is enough, kind of a thing. I think at least for, we can test, pilot test these kind of projects when they come early on.
Councilmember Robdy, please?
Further on to the, this is all new to us theme. You're doing an amazing job. I'm wondering, as we get more into this and you were talking about, like, people that have experience with tax credit projects and that sort of thing. Do you think that there's, is there anything that you can think of that would be a good idea skill-wise? That, like, a skills gap that we can address proactively? You know, like, training you need or whoever's gonna oversee this? Do we need, is that something we need to think about? Like, do we need some expertise in any area that we currently don't have?
Yeah, and I think that kind of goes along with, you know, depending on how you want to develop a program. If you want things to, you know, continue, sort of continue on indefinitely, if they're one-time projects, and to think about those types of things. But affordable housing is a specialty and that's why we do have HRNA that was helping us dive into some of these different items and to bring those, that expertise from those different, you know, just what they've worked with in different communities, but their, you know, tax credits and all of that. So I think some of that will stem from, and one of the last bullet points I have on a slide is, based on some of the feedback we get, developing some different timelines, what types of resources, what, you know, how would we get there with some of the directions that you all want to go? So it's definitely an area that would need to be, I think, addressed a little bit more, but it'll depend on kind of that final direction that we're headed with things.
Councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, no, sorry, like, I'm getting all kinds of ideas. So all this is only for the developer who's coming for either single-family or multifamily. Can we create some kind of incentive for the commercial guys so that if we can tweak some of the UDO that they can send, give money to a coffer's which is set for affordable housing as, you know, trade-off?
And I think that is, I'm trying to recall from a conversation, that one might be tricky because of it being specifically what we're allowed to do.
But it's voluntary, yeah. Like, you know, if they say, like, I need less tree canopy or less parking. And we know, like, it's daytime and nighttime, nighttime there's no one. And in that way, can they, like, you know, fund the affordable? Because for us, we can do all these things, but the amount of buildable area right now is hardly anything left. So the commercial is there. So I wanted to tap on the commercial, like, in a way where they're, they would voluntarily come or give them incentives that would help them to come to the table.
Yeah, we'd have to see if it could be related to affordable housing. There are, I know Wake County spoke about, you know, just the participation of, you know, private companies in some of their programs and just donating to their larger pot of the, I think, the loan program and things that they have. I don't know if, I mean, it would have to be voluntary versus, I think, maybe a trade-off with incentives, but that that is, you know, something that they have and we can encourage those private companies to participate in such a program. That does help the region. It helps Morrisville as well. But it is an area we can look into a little bit more.
When you say private companies, what does that mean?
Oh, in terms of just, I say private company, it's not a municipality. Anyone that's engaging in different types of business in Morrisville. So the business community, essentially.
Okay, so like, I'm more than like, I'm saying around the macrame, that's where my mind is. If anyone is building like a huge life science or they're doing something, and I don't think they would mind just giving some so that they have a good word and we are giving some in our UDO incentives. That's just a thought. I thought it would be maximize the dollar somewhere.
I can put that on as sort of an item to be explored further on, further on down the way, but making sure of note of that and make sure we've got all the details of, you know, what could work or couldn't work or very voluntary.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Robdy?
Yeah, I wanted to add my strong support to that idea. And also to, well, just to clarify. So are you saying, like, you're proposing something that would be like a Parkland payment and lieu but for?
Kind of, yeah.
But for affordable housing where?
No, it's not.
I mean, I'm sure there's legalities, but I'm just saying.
We don't have the authority to take like that, you know? We don't have that. The only thing what we have is we can ask them voluntarily if, okay, these are the incentives. If you want to utilize them, there is, you can give it, you know? And I know Michelle, why she came. It's purely, I know, I don't want to go into the impact fees and those kind of things, but this is more like-
You're saying more of a good corporate citizen?
Yeah, you know, like, okay, suppose they want 150 parking lots. They say 125. Okay, then this is if you want 25 parking lots, is say $200,000 that it go into affordable housing, kind of a stuff.
That sounds like something staff can look into.
Yeah, I think it'll be a fine line to take a look at, but we can, we can add that to the list of, and just knowing that Wake County also has just a general place that different businesses can donate to as well. There are different, some different avenues, so. Are we good with that? Put that one on the list to, we'll add that one to explore more later.
To wrap up, number one, are you to that point where you're trying to look for consensus here to see if we're ready to move forward?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Does anyone have any concerns, given what she's presented and what we talked about so far? Staff bringing something back in, on this item to try to keep it moving forward?
Because what we're looking at is a policy adoption would be the next step on this one.
Okay.
Okay, and then if you have it, I'm gonna try to scroll down several slides here to... Okay, so I did want to follow up and hopefully see. Remembering all this from a little over a month ago now, but some of the things that I did pull out from the discussion with Wake County and affordable housing, it's a few action steps for staff. So one is to make sure that we are working with Wake County to pull together some information that they are aware of the different financial programs that Wake County offers so that we are sharing that with the developers when they come in. Some may know about it, some may not. But it seems like an area that we want to make sure we're sharing that. As well as, there was a lot of different programs that Wake County went over, whether it was for the developer or for residents and that we are incorporating that into the town's affordable housing webpage so those resources are more well-known and shared with people. And then the third item, which I'll circle back to this one, but we do want to staff to gather and submit a town's data request to Wake County. So this is where I'll need some feedback from, from all of you in terms of that particular information. And I will go to one more slide and then we'll come back as part of the discussion. One of the things that we heard, too, in sort of term this one, partnership strategies, is what town council would be interested in hearing back from Wake County is what could a partnership with Wake County look like to support a home ownership scenario, rental project scenario, and down payment assistance program? So those are areas that we are looking at. Getting some example projects of what they've worked on. I know there was interest in, you know, how much did a municipality contribute to a project? What did that sort of financial side of it look like? Understanding what they've worked on. And having, having some more information to feed into ideas about what a partnership could look like. And so that is another next step. And if there's, you know, more specific information about those that you would all be interested in. Because in the next steps, what I do have is, what types of information does county council really need to make a decision? And so that helps us to be able to formulate questions back to Wake County on these particular items. So I've put two, three different, you know, kind of partnership strategies here. And then back on the other slide is, you know, information, data. Because Wake County mentioned they have a lot of, you know, data that they could try to pull some stuff together that's Morrisville-specific and making sure that we have that information. So really looking for feedback from everyone on what would you like to see to be able to make more decisions? And is it data-related or other types of questions? So that's what I would open, open back up and-
Okay. Councilmember Robdy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor Pretend Johnson, please, and then I'll have a question.
So, yes, Danielle, yes to all of this. Whatever you, all that you've come up with, I think, and you're right. We talked about a lot of data that's available and notes I took. I think Councilmember Rao talked about this number, this deficit number, and I wrote down 1,160, 1,160. And they talked about how they know the breakdown of apartments versus single-family homes and all. So yes, I'd like to see all that information. The other thing I made a note of that night was that they have for Morrisville, and I hope I wrote this down right, they have information on naturally aging affordable units that were at risk of losing. So I'd like to understand that, too. And what kind of data they have related to that and what that means for us in this program and moving forward, too.
Okay.
At a minimum, that's what I'm looking for. And of course, then, I'm sorry, and then also the idea you have about partnering with them to help leverage town funds. I am absolutely 100% interested in that and how we can, because you heard my concerns the last time, helping as many people as possible. And so leveraging funds that are available to folks that are Wake County residents and another pot, we need to be dipping into that as well and helping, so, yes.
Yeah, I'd be interested in the different AMI between Wake County and what Morrisvilles are. The consultant has been really good about saying where there's actually the opportunity to help people. Like, some people are so far that it's, it's not really possible, given our resources, even partnering with Wake County to help them to get to where they need to be for ownership. That being said, I'm really interested in home ownership projects with them and down payment assistance program. I'd rather concentrate our efforts and our limited resources on those. But if they come in with a rental project scenario that's really helps a lot and doesn't use up a lot of our limited resources, I'd be open to it. But I'd really look at home ownership and the down payment assistance that we've been talking about so much and we've really come around on. I'd like to try to get that moving as quickly as possible. And if they're able to add some money into that to make it a little bit less burdensome to us, but serve their constituents like they're serving ours with their shared tax dollars, those are where I'm really interested in the data there.
Okay.
Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, I would be interested to know if Wake County has a down payment assistance program as well that we could partner with them? Because I'm interested in home ownership as well. Because it seems like at the beginning of this year, the council was pretty in agreement that we were looking, that we all wanted to focus on down payment assistance of supporting public employees. And that now we're taking steps back and delaying being able to help individuals in our town. And I hate to see that happening. So where we could help or partner with Wake County, if possible, I'd like to go ahead and do that.
And I will add just one thing as well, too, because I know there, yeah, there was a few items kind of moving along. And then was also hearing interest, and I think some of it came out of seeing sort of like Apex's plan where, you know, financially, a bunch of things were outlined. It's cost this much, it's cost this much, and sort of adopting that package. And I think that's why there's a, I don't call it a slight step backwards, but also, you know, talking with Wake County and exploring all these different areas that people are interested in as well is, you know, if you do want to set aside money for affordable housing, what are all the, is it one program, multiple things? And kind of getting a better, a better idea of the options before maybe just committing to one thing as well. And so I think that's kind of some of the conversation that I've been hearing as well and that hopefully whatever information or questions you guys have as well could help filter into getting to a point where you say, these are, these are some more concrete options to go with or directions to go.
Did you want to speak?
No.
Okay, anything from the virtual? Okay. So I think we shared our questions and our information needs at this point. Any other questions that you need to ask us or?
There aren't, but I did feel like you guys had maybe a little more data questions during that meeting. And I don't know if I've captured, because I know we've got, you know, sort of that general deficit and maybe also deficit at different AMI levels. Understanding maybe sort of the financial thing of how Morrisville may differ a little from Wake County as a whole and how, you know, understanding that dynamic, understanding the NOAA, which is the natural occurring for affordable housing stock, how that, if they have some information, what is that breakdown? And then I did hear some interest, too, of, you know, whether it's multifamily or single-family, if there's information, I think, on that as well, according to some of these deficits. Maybe I heard that as well.
I mean, one thing they did say is they've been working in other parts of Wake County, especially Raleigh, in more rental sides of things and that they were willing to work with us to understand better the home ownership and how they can be part of that for affordable housing. So I, I'd just like to say, yes, please. And if they have ideas and best practices, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. I mean, they did the big study a few years ago. We used that same consultant a couple more times. So if they have something concrete that they think they could put in place that they could work with us with, I would just love to just see that and start learning as we go. Because we can talk forever, but we'll actually learn by doing. Like, with the accessory dwelling units, it took them a couple of years before people started to use them, even though they set up the possibility for them. So that might be the same thing here. We might have a little bit of time with things in place that it's not being taken advantage of. So I think we just need to get it moving. Councilmember Robdy, followed by Councilmember Fender?
I think that you can kind of see that borne out by the fact that the number that Vicki Adamson quoted when she was here was they had $62 million and they used $4 million of it because people weren't aware of the programs and the utilization wasn't there. So I do think that that's, that's a fair point. The other thing was, oh my God, I have no, no idea what the other thing was. Go ahead.
We'll circle back. Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, I was just gonna note that town council has been looking at affordable housing before Ann and I were on the council. So that is over four years ago. And here we are, we still haven't, this town council hasn't done anything yet. And I realize it takes time and effort to assess what we can do and what we can't do. But would really like for us to pick something and do it. I mean, at the beginning of this year, we were all for doing down payment assistance. And now we're talking about, oh, we gotta go gather data. I mean, that, that's, you know, that just sounds so typical of bureaucracy, of what people, our constituents, don't want us to do. I mean, if we're not gonna do down payment assistance, can we at least look at doing land donation and build a couple houses for Habitat, whatever it is? I mean, it seems like the council's been talking about this long enough. I mean, it seems like the council's been talking about this long enough, I know Vicky is very passionate about this, it just seems like we need to have more action and do something.
Anyone else have anything they want to share at this time? Yes. Uh, Councilmember Rao, please, your thoughts?
Well, I want to piggyback up on what Councilmember Fender said, I think, I think it's, I agree, I think that we've got to figure out a way to put the pieces in place and get something going, and it could, you know, maybe, I think, I know that the down payment assistance may not be the way to go, but I, I'd like to see us really come up with a timeline, that, you know, we can say, okay, these are the two or three components of an affordable housing plan, this is where the funding's gonna come from, and simple to what Apex has, I like that program, and then we can really say, okay, we're putting the money in, we're getting the units built, or we at least having the incentives in place, and so I think it's a combination of what we're seeing tonight, the regulatory, the land donation, I think the data is important in terms of just letting the public know that there's 1,100 housing gap, with people paying 30% more of their income, because I know there's people that serve on a planning and zoning board that continue to say we don't have an affordable housing problem, I completely disagree with that, I think that the data clearly shows that there is a housing, uh, uh, problem or gap at Morrisville, and I think having that data is important, so that the public can see that there's an issue that we're trying to solve. So I, I would really like to see, maybe, you know, us kind of come up with a timeline for ourselves, so that we know that between a certain, between the next few months, that we know these are the programs that we're gonna fund, and we're gonna make some affordable housing units happen in 2023, or early 2000, you know, early next year. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Rao. Councilmember Scroggs Johnson, your thoughts, please?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think we are moving the needle, and I do agree with everyone that said that we're moving really slow, the consideration though is, we need to measure twice, cut once, so we need to be cautious about what we're, you know, making happen. I, I like the idea of the home ownership project scenario for a couple reasons, we will be able to have more control ultimately, we could impose deed restrictions to keep the, the home properties in an affordable state, there's a lot of legal ways that you can restrict deeds to help the homeowners, but yet maintain the affordability of the property over a long time, and that could inevitably help more than a few families with down payment assistance. So I think there's, there's a lot of possible partnership with Wake County on that as well. The down payment assistance, I like it, I just really don't like the fact that we would be helping such a small number of families potentially, and then there would be a question if those properties could be kept affordable over the long time, that's more of a risk for me. And I will share some anecdotal information that I've been asking about rents, rent prices in Morrisville, and it's not very friendly for young families or seniors, and, or people that are, are working on a living wage, is one bedrooms are nearly $2,000, with two bedrooms over $2,000 a month, and that is not affordable for sure, the supplemental, you know, stipend for families that would qualify for rental assistance, that would be a significant amount of a monthly, uh, payment as well. So looking at the options presented here, my first, you know, preference would be the home ownership project scenario, partnering with Wake County and maybe some other entities. Thank you.
I don't see anything else, and any other questions, and if you have what you need?
Yes, um, because we've got a little bit of data stuff, but also with the partnership strategies, one of the things that we would be looking to bring back is understanding how, what they've looked like in other places, and that will give a better idea as well too, as sort of that cost commitment, a lot of it then has to go to, if there is interest, you know, finding land, buying land, those types of things, but I think that'll help provide some information in terms of direction on those next, if they're of interest. So we will be working with, I know Wake County's been eager to talk to us, they've already had a meeting, and we're like, oh, we need to make sure we get a little bit more information, so we'll be having more conversations, and then scheduling something to come back with you all to provide that information.
Hey, Danielle, just one more thing, sorry, I would be really interested in more opportunities to learn from the Wake County people about the programs that they have, if they would be willing to come back, like, I found that session so informative and very timely, and if they would be willing to come back, I, I'd really be interested in setting up, even if it was like some kind of quarterly cadence, where they just tell us what's new, and, you know, that kind of thing, I would really like to be talking to them on an ongoing basis.
I, I'm gonna echo that, I, I totally agree, and they offered that, we talked about that toward the end, and I think that would be really valuable, so, thank you for bringing that up.
And one thing does not slow down the other, like, you're gonna bring number one back probably end of this month.
Oh, yeah, for, yeah, I think, we'll see about it, yeah, because it's pretty much in shape, it may just come back as a-
Yeah, definitely was not suggesting an either-or there.
Oh, yeah, no, that one, that one continues on, I think that can be separate from, from these items, as we look in a little bit more detail on those.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's all that I have.
On that item, or at all?
That's it, we were just coming back, we were, I know you're expecting like a three-hour meeting for this one, but it was just this last item that we did not finish last time, so I just had questions there to what more information you all needed, and that's, that's everything that I had.
Okay, could I just share some quick thoughts? I know we're trying to be done. So one reason I like the down payment assistance, it's because it, it works with the market, essentially, and it's money that's revolving, so the idea is, the house prices are the house prices, but we're helping someone get into the house that we want to have live in town, and then that money is tied up for a while, but we're getting a minimal interest rate, and then we get it back. When we buy land and donate it, that money is pretty much out the door, we do have deed restrictions and the control to keep it either shared equity, or not affordable, or just goes to market in the future, but I just think that that's a way to use our resources, but it might not be an ongoing sustainable way. So with our limited resources, I just want us to think about what we're gonna use the money for, but that being said, those items that you mentioned, the properties that staff looked at and thought were good to move forward, what direction do you need from the council to actually really make that happen now?
So as terms of the, the lot set, mentioning it was item number, number two that we had talked about last time, the next step for staff on that one is to take a closer look at those properties, understand, you know, do they, would they require rezoning, working maybe with Habitat more, taking that next step, we heard that there was interest to look at it more in depth on those, so that is something that is gonna be happening behind the scenes, I didn't bring it back up here with a, you know, very specific, since it felt like there was good direction last time, but that'll come back as well for, and either our findings, or some type of, you know, next step, depending on where we go with that one.
Okay, so you've gotten what you need for that item.
Yes, on that one, we do.
One thing that was noted pretty prominently is that there might be an issue with the flyover, but I think this council has said that the flyover isn't happening, so how much of a concern is that?
So I am, with, you know, the Aviation Parkway widening, starting back up again, because there is funding in the, the new stip for that, and the road widening project, is understanding from NCDOT whether or not there is, I know there is not interest from town council for the flyover, but making sure it's clear from them, are they pursuing that in any way in the future, a phase two or anything? One thing that we don't want to happen is, we, we put in houses, and either one has to be taken down, or now you're looking at a big wall, and making sure we're very clear on that direction that they are heading.
Okay.
And so that is something that we would try to bring back into that conversation more, if we've got any more detail, to help inform the direction there.
Okay. Any final comments on this item, other than our thanks to staff for all the good work?
No, yeah, I just want to, I started saying this, and we were going to break at the last meeting, Danielle, but thank you very much, I know this topic is not in your wheelhouse, and you've had to kind of take it on and, and run with it, and you've done an incredible job, so we really thank you for helping us get to this point, we are further along than we would be without you, so I appreciate that very much.
For sure, you speak for everybody there, that was for sure.
Okay.
She's good.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you and staff, Michelle. So we have two closed sessions this evening to discuss matters relating to economic development and a personnel matter, we don't plan to have any public discussion of any items after that, so at this time, I'd like to thank you for watching the meeting of the Morrisville Town Council, we hope you plan to join us again at Morrisville on Thursday, please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org, or visit www.townofmorrisville.org/council for additional contact information. Does anyone have the closed session?
I do.
Okay.
I make a motion that pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11, and one, 143-3, sorry, 143-318.11A4, and 143-318.11A6, to discuss matters relating to economic development and to personnel matters.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to go into closed session, and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 5-0, it is 7:12, we are in closed session. We are gonna take a 15-minute break.